Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, July 9th, 2025 at 6:00 P.M. I call the meeting to order, and would you all please join me in the pleasure allegiance?
...to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, City Recorder. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Newton?
Present.
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Van Dremelin?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Counselor McGee is on vacation, so she will not be joining us tonight, virtually or in present person. Thank you. Our next counsel, item three on your agenda, is the adoption of the consent calendar. Any questions or concerns, or do the counsel have a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, counsel. Is our presenter here, number four? Oh, she is. Okay, great. The presentation and the ceremonies, item four, is Oregon Senior Games, Terry Fackrow, pages fifteen through twenty-four in your packet.
Trying to make sure I got it all logged in for you. Thank you for letting me...
Oh, there we go.
All right, now I have it together.
Oh, there you go. Perfect. Thank you.
So I want to thank you. Let's try that. That's better. No echoes. Thank you for letting me come to the council meeting. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. We are here to talk a little bit about the Oregon Senior Games. I am with the City of Corvallis Parks and Recreation Department, and I work with a team to help provide the Oregon Senior Games. Our primary partner is Physic Corvallis, who used to run the games, and then they asked the city to take them over. We are partnering also with the City of Albany Parks and Recreation Department for several different venues in town to host the games. So it's becoming more of a mid Willamette Valley enterprise, not just a Corvallis thing. And so I wanted just to go through a few slides. So the Senior Games is a competition for folks who are fifty years and older. We have competitors all the way up to ninety-two, ninety-nine, participating in some of our activities. And so it's all ages and all abilities, really, for anyone over fifty. The idea is that it brings folks, help them keep active in a healthy, active way, to give them some competition that is more equitable to their age group, and just a way to encourage people to keep moving. We have fourteen or more competitions, what we call tournaments, divisions, that we provide over three weekends in August. So the first three weekends of August is Oregon Senior Games weekend. The games are part of the National Senior Games program, where during every other year, it's a national qualifier. So this year is not a national qualifier, but next year it will be a national qualifier. So in 2025, right now, the National Games will be down in Des Moines. And most of the folks from Oregon who qualified have signed up to participate, and they got their qualifications last year. The most sports, they qualify by placing in the top four of their age group in their division in their state. So it's not too tough to get to national, but you pay your own way and you participate then. So, and it's supposed to be a really great party at Nationals, and so they always encourage everyone to come. One of the athletes that qualified in 2020 was Shirley Radicki. She was ninety-two at the time that she qualified, and she won two gold medals at Nationals in track and field. Or actually, she won them in swimming. So you really can win gold when you're old. The activities that we are presenting are listed here for this year. The ones in yellow are the three that are being hosted here in the City of Albany. The YMCA is hosting the basketball competitions, and then York Pool and the softball fields are hosting the softball tournament. So far, we have six teams signed up for softball, but we believe we'll have a few more by the time we end up getting ready for the games. The... Last year, we had about sixty swimmers participate in the swimming competition, and we anticipate having close to that this year at York Pool. The first weekend of August 1st through the 3rd will have golf, archery, basketball, beach volleyball, and softball. And then August 8th through the 10th, it'll be bowling, racquetball, track and field, and cornhole. Track and field will be at the OSU stadium, and track and field meet. And then August 14th through the 18th, it's pickleball, tennis, disc golf, table tennis, and swimming. Swimming is held just one day, August 17th, so you can drop by and cheer some folks on at your pool. A quick breakout of our event is we have eight hundred and forty-three participants last year. And our fees, we try to keep at a reasonable rate. It's thirty-five to forty-five dollars for the game fee, which helps pay for the overhead, the medals, T-shirts and such for the athletes and participants. And then they pay a ten to twenty-dollar sport fee that helps offset costs associated with their particular sport, such as officials and equipment. And so it just depends on what you do, how much it costs you. And folks register online at oregonseongerames.com. And again, as I mentioned earlier, it's more than just playing or competing. It's about being there, hanging out with their friends, having their grandkids cheer them on instead of them cheering on their grandkids, like they usually do at their soccer games. So it's kind of fun to cheer on your grandpa. And it's a great way to just stay healthy and keep moving. Some of the feedback from our different surveys that we've submitted throughout the years are very positive. People really enjoy participating. They like the way it's organized, and they like to volunteer. So one of the ways you can volunteer, it takes a lot of volunteers over those three weekends to support all these mini tournaments. And it's everything from packet stuffing to helping that track and field as a timer or maybe retrieving the shot put. So it can be an active volunteer opportunity that you can choose, or it can be a little more relaxed, handing out water and Gatorade at the hospitality tent. But we encourage everyone to volunteer. A lot of our athletes, their family members help so that they can do something while they're watching them play. A lot of times, it's athletes who are interested in coming but aren't sure they want to do it, so they check us out by volunteering. And then a lot of companies use it as a way to do some team building and do some fun things together in the summer with their comrades in arms at work. So anyone who loves to help out their community or wants to check out Senior Games, volunteering is a great way to see the insider knowledge of it. And we just want to encourage you to come out and see what's happening in your community, cheer on those athletes, and you'll be inspired to get off the couch and join them.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counsel McLeod?
Yeah, I think this sounds really cool. I think it sounds amazing. I'm not too many years off from fifty, so I think I'm going to start training, and this sounds amazing. I actually did participate in Valor Games competition through the VA, since I'm a veteran and I have gold medals in archery and rowing. And I also used to swim competitively, so this sounds really cool. I think I'd like to volunteer, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you so much.
Counselor Newton?
Oh, I say I have a lot more years till then, but just kidding. But no, I've actually, I think we've chatted once before, a few years ago, about this. I think when it first came to Corvallis, is it 2019, 2020, like right around?
It was right around COVID, so I think it was 2020.
I'm excited to see it still happening. I'm excited it's becoming more of a mid-Willamette thing because, you know, our pool rocks.
Yeah, yeah. You do. And we're, I mean, we're in Monroe, so we're trying to spread the wealth and support the whole community.
I think that's awesome. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
So I want to say thank you. Your staff that reached out to me was fantastic. I really enjoyed the concept. I think it's going to be great for both communities and wherever it's going to be. And my business is based, focused on seniors, so it really makes me happy that my seniors will be able to volunteer and hopefully get involved next year, or next time we have them. Anything from us, I'll be at the softball, go see some softballs. I've been part of softball for fifteen years.
Okay, there you go.
I love softball, so. But thank you for doing this.
We really appreciate the partnership with the City of Albany. We couldn't do without you. And, you know, our little pool is having trouble, so we're glad that you're next door.
Well, thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Do you have any flyers or something you can leave with us?
Yes.
Can you give them to City Recorder, please?
We can. Thank you.
Have you emailed a copy to me as well? I'll share it on my social media.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Next is public hearings, Community Development Block Grant Action, 2025 Action Plan, excuse me, Action Plan Hearing and Adoption, Anne Catlin, pages twenty-five to eighty-six in your packet. And I will go to the... Next on tonight's agenda is the public hearing for Community Development Block Grant 2025 Action Plan and Community Needs. I declare the public hearing open at 6:13 P.M. At this time, I call staff for report from project planner Anne Catlin.
Thank you, mayor and counselors. I'm Anne Catlin, the Community Development Department. My screen is not showing up yet, but I just wanted to give you a few highlights about the 2025 Action Plan, which is the plan that shows how the city is going to spend the annual allocation from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for eligible Community Development Block Grant programs. I don't know why this isn't sharing. Let's see.
Is the previous speaker still connected?
Anyway, so as you may remember from the June meeting, there are specific national objectives that... Going to get some technical help. You may remember that there are some national program objectives for these funds, and primarily, the program supports low and moderate income residents with decent housing, suitable living environments, and expanded economic opportunities. So in...
It's coming up.
Okay, now it's coming up, but I need to... Yep. Yeah, I'll just... Oh, it is. It was open. All right, sorry. I'll just reopen it. Anyway, we received an allocation of three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, essentially, and the city uses a competitive grant application process to identify partners to carry out these funds. And I just wanted to go over who those recipients were and be available to answer any questions. So when the Community Development Commission, which is appointed by the mayor, throughout the year, we do agency consultations to try to identify what needs are out there that could be addressed with the Community Development Block Grant funds, and then also look for partners that could achieve our consolidated plan goals. And the consolidated plan is that five-year strategic plan. So the most competitive part of the process is applications for public services, and those funds are capped at fifteen percent of our total awards, so it's about fifty-five thousand dollars, fifty-six thousand dollars. So it's often very challenging to narrow down what activities to fund, but the Community Development Commission does a really good job of identifying activities that will address those needs that were found in the five-year plan. So the Senior Companion Program, operated by Cascades West Council of Governments, will receive funding. And then two programs for children will be supported with scholarships, one at the Boys and Girls Club for summer programming. You may know that they do weekly camps and programs, so low and moderate income children will receive scholarships. And then the YMCA is taking over the CAP before and after school program, and low and moderate income, or children from lower and moderate income households will receive scholarships for those programs. So other public service grants that are support, but the need to provide services to our low-income residents, but another goal is to reduce homelessness, are grants that would go to two of our local shelter service providers. Jackson Street Youth Services will receive some funding for providing case management and transitional housing for young adults. Those are ages eighteen to twenty-four. And then Second Chance will receive funding to really beef up their training and shelter for homeless residents. And their primary goal is to help residents gain skills so that they can actually transition out of shelter. That's one of the challenges. They need the beds for other people, and so they are going to be working on job skills. So then, aside from public services, there are a lot of variety of activities that could be funded, but again, we rely on partners to apply for the funds. We also work with parks to see if there are any activities that may be eligible for funding needs within our parks. But this year, we had two applicants for housing rehabilitation activities, and both of those applicants will receive funding. So Habitat for Humanity will receive funding to offer an essential repairs program for homes occupied by lower or moderate income homeowners. And then the Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development will receive funding at three different properties, but they are required by the state to either provide air conditioning units in all of their units or provide cooling centers. So two of their properties have community rooms. Those will get air conditioning, and then they'll replace a roof that is over one of those that also has a couple of units, and then they'll do siding repairs at a duplex that provides supportive housing. So with that, this hearing is an opportunity for you to hear any comments about needs that could be supported with the Community Development Block Grant program, and also an opportunity for the community to ask questions about the programs or to provide comments on our performance. And at this time, I'd take any questions you have about...
So does the counsel have any questions or comments?
The program.
It doesn't sound like there are any many questions, but just to clarify, I serve on the board of the Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development, and HUD rules. I have no conflict of interest. I'm a volunteer. But just to be safe with HUD rules, I won't be discussing on this matter. I won't be voting. That clear.
Counselors? I want to say to you, thank you for the work that your team puts in supporting the commission. I think it's hard work. It's meaningful work. And when you leave the room and things are done, it feels really good to be letting people know that they're getting their award, to make things happen.
Thank you.
We will now be taking comments, public comments. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of the testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and provide it to the clerk. Virtual attendees, please email to City Clerk, which is, City Recorder, which is on the website. Those who registered to speak during this meeting will now be called upon first for the first to comment. Is there names on the sign-up sheet? Okay. Sharon Canopa, you're up. Can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, folks. Great seeing you. For the record, my name is Sharon Canopa, and I am here on behalf of Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development. We were established in 1991 and been a nonprofit for quite a few years. And we provide very, are pretty much Albany's low-income housing provider. So about the lowest rents is what we have for our program. We also provide supportive services and services for folks needing mental health management. And that's in partnership with Lynn County Mental Health. So I'm here for support of the CDBG action plan. I remember when we first started this plan, back when we, back after the twenty census that we had, and we were going to receive funds, but it was never as much funds that we hoped for. So Anne has done a wonderful job over the years in making sure that all applicants are complying with HUD rules, and a very fair process, too. I have always seen that when Anne is getting applicants and reviewing them. So I really appreciate that hard work that's been put into it, and she makes sure every word complies with HUD rules, too. So I did attend the community, the development commission's meetings, and I was very impressed with the committee members. They did a wonderful job in asking questions and really understanding the applications. And so with that, if you have any questions over Albany Partnership's application, I'm here for that. Other words, I hope you would consider adopting this plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate it. Okay, we will now, there's no one else that signed up. We will now be taking comments from those who did not register. Does anyone in the chambers, in the audience, wish to speak about this topic, proposed plan, or community needs? If so, please state your name and make your comments, and from the dais, from the chair, the city council will consider them.
Good afternoon, everyone, city council, mayor, and staff behind me. I just want to commend the staff, beginning with Ms. Anne and the team there, and the team working under Mr. Matt. They're tremendous. And I represent the Albany Area Habitat for Humanity. They call me Mr. G. And in the meantime, while we've been waiting to, for this, we have been doing some repairs. We've completed about ten repairs since January, all around under five thousand dollars in working with the community and with other businesses. We also just broke ground on another home that we're building for deserving family who's been waiting for like six years for us to get to this. In taking over Habitat about a year and a half ago, I had to complete two homes, and those were completed, and two deserving families are in there. And now I'm on a mission to complete this home. My goal is by the end of the year, but we'll see what happens. And also some good news, we received some lift funding for a project out on Irvine, which is six homes. I've been working with Anne and the team on that. And if all goes well, I hope to break ground on those six small cluster homes, which is, which fits into the middle housing that the city has been working on and that we fully support as well. And the goal is to finish those six homes within two years so that smaller families can move into this cluster home environment. And I will continue working to build homes as fast as possible for our community. And I want to thank you for your support and allowing us to partner with you on the CDBG grant and all the other initiatives that we look forward to doing, and keep you abreast of all the great news and good information, and I look forward to working with the city and the city staff. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Oh, he has a question. Mayor Counsel Smith has a question.
Where is the property on Irvine Street?
It's on Irvine, right off 34, so there's no address yet, but at the corner of Irvine and 34, there's a nice, large piece of property right next to it. You have to turn down Irvine. There's a nice square lot that's got high grass on it. I'm trying to keep it lower.
Know exactly where it is.
Exactly. And one of the issues, that that was large enough to build eight homes, but we reduced it to six smaller homes to make sure that we have parking for those six homes, because even though that's a nice, wide street, I don't want to, you know, I want everybody to be successful and everybody to be happy. So the point is, even though we don't have to put parking, our goal is to make everybody happy with our community and happy with the homes that we're building. My goal is to build six, you know, a showcase community there so that we can all stop and be very, very proud of it.
Thank you. I'd like to take a look at that when we get a chance next week.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're attending virtually, I think, anybody else is virtually? Nobody else is virtually. I still have to read the statement. If you're attending virtually, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. We have nobody online. Okay, good. Does the staff want, wish to respond to any of the comments before? Okay, thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Does the staff, oh, excuse me. I declare the public hearing closed at 6:28 P.M. Does the counsel would like to discuss the plan or additional questions for staff?
Just one comment. I'm glad to see the support for the Senior Companion Program. That's been kind of an orphan bounced around from here to there, and it's getting some good recognition now. Thanks.
Any council discussion?
Great work, Anne Catlin. Thank you for bringing this project before. I know it was no small feat.
And what she said, Anne, the work you do for this commission is amazing, so we do appreciate it. Do I have a motion? The resolution's on page 28 of your packet.
Excuse me, sorry. I move to adopt the Community Development Block Grant 2025 Action Plan as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Those opposed say no. Thank, we have one abstention, correct? Okay, thank you. Next on Tonight's, oh, let me make sure, next on Tonight's agenda is item six is public comments. Is the time for Albany residents to speak and for the councils to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take the comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether you live in the city of Albany. First up is Tom Cordier.
Somebody's tall here, I don't know. There. Okay, Tom Cordier, I live in North Albany, out near Covey Run, and my friend, Wyn Eaton, has been trying to build a single-family house on a city lot for two years. He submitted the plans for the, for the house. They were approved, they're paid for, and yet it hasn't been built, because he's suffered harassment by city employees in terms of writing stop-work orders and then pulling them back, writing new stop-work orders, and to the point where the judge, Matthew Donahue, yesterday in Benton County Court, granted a preliminary injunction against the city of Albany. And so the city of Albany is prevented from enforcing their illegal stop-work order against us on any part of our property. And that was argued in Benton County Court by CIS attorney Kagan. The harassment included going to the neighbors, trying to convince people that this was, that this applicant was conducting a building not to code. They, city employees would come out and use the neighbors' lots to spy on the act, the work that was being done, even though it was stop-worked. They flew, they brought drones with them and droned the property. This property, by the way, has a single lot that's buildable, and it also has Benton County land associated with it. So the applicant has, is dealing with the Benton County people as well as the Lynn County people, and, and he, he, the judge said that the case is ripe for compensatory damages, the way the city has conducted itself. The Public Works Director failed to attend a scheduled meeting back in October, on October 24th of last year, and this abuse by the city staff and administration is unacceptable to this member of this community, and it needs to stop. And so there's going to be a final hearing in September of this year, and I would encourage the city to stop wasting attorney money and settle this thing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Rick Sahary, Saharland? Did I say that correct?
Sutherland?
Yes. Sutherland, I'm sorry. North Albany Road, okay.
Yes, I'm Richard Sutherland. I've lived in North Albany the past 50 years. I've driven on North Albany Road for thousands of times over these past years. I've never received a speeding ticket over the past 57 years. I was approaching the 20 mile an hour speed sign at the elementary school on Good Friday of the 18th, at about 11 o'clock, and you're aware that it goes from 40 to 20. I immediately slowed down to 20, looked at the school, saw no children in the area, no buses, no cars, no, and then a school sign that says, no school, April 17th and 18th. You know, I've been by this area so many times, I finally concluded, there's no school today. I didn't see any school, okay? At that point, I increased my speed to, and was recorded by the camera at 32 miles an hour. I received a speeding citation. I was told that school was in session at middle school. As you're aware, that middle school, NAMHS is up 400 yards down, down the road, behind the elementary school. There's really no way to know if the school, if one school's operating and one school is not. I really don't believe that North Albany Road is safer nowadays to children due to installation of the camera system. Maybe one result has been, there's many angry people going, following people that go slow in that area, know how to what the day is, and shaking their fists, honking their horns, following very closely. And of course, there's no way for police to enforce something like that. But people are telling, I'm telling me they're avoiding North Albany Road, going down to Quarry, which makes the Quarry and Springhill busier. Many schools, school systems don't have a camera system. They'll use a flashing red, or flashing yellow light when school's in session. Apparently, the city council has looked at this option, but not, with appropriate money to install and operate one. This would be a safer option, I think, for the area, as opposed to using a system. I chose to go to court, and I did that yesterday, and was told that many, which means hundreds of citations were issued during the Thursday and Friday by the judge, okay, during, during that two-day period. There are probably some people that never received a speeding ticket in their life. They will now have a speeding ticket on the record, and, and I think it's wrong. I think good citizens are being penalized. These citizens will have their, on their driving record. I was told by the court that someone in the court notified the city and told them about this issue, and said, ask if citations should be held, withheld on that time. And it was, they were told, no. My wife heard it as somebody went to the police department, I don't know, but somebody talked from the court, the judge told us that. And so they said, you know, they said that they're not going to do that, they have to, the citations have to hold. Somebody also said that people had multiple tickets. They eliminated all of them but one. Some people had six multiple tickets, and they eliminated everything for one person, so they had to get one fine.
Thank you, sir.
And I apologize, I went over the time, but
Sorry, thank you. Do you have something you can give to the court recorder, sorry, city recorder?
Excuse me?
You have something, a statement you want to give to him?
No, I
Thank you. Ray Hiltz?
Good evening, I'm Ray Hiltz. I live in Albany, and I want to give you the results of the Lumberjack Breakfast. These are preliminary. We served 3,695 people, plus whatever they went back for seconds or thirds. We will net about 32,000 in that area, and all of that money will go to charities in Albany area. Okay, some of you don't know me, but about three years ago, I talked up the gas pack, gas tax. At that time, there was quite a bit of discussion, and I promoted it based upon, well, some people said, well, they'll go to Corvallis to buy their gas. Well, at that time, the gas was higher in Corvallis than it was here in Albany. It appears that the state legislature has not, decided not to do anything about the gas tax on the state level. I understand that you'll be presenting sometime a proposal, along with the education program, for the gas tax. I question our citizens of Albany that they will not pass the gas tax, because approximately three years ago, the gas was approximately a dollar less than it is now. And so I can't see where they will be passing it. I hope they do, and however, don't delay putting it on the ballot, because if they fail, if they don't pass it, then it looks like you'll have to make a decision to go to utility tax or something similar, and not pass it down the road. So many years, it's next year, next year, next year. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you, Ray.
And I got 12 minutes.
12 seconds. Thank you.
Yeah, 12 seconds.
Next is Rebecca Bond. Director Bond?
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Rebecca Bond with the Albany Visitors Association, and I have a couple of things to share with you tonight. I'll leave them on the back table if you want to grab them later. One is the annual Albany Visitor Guide, just came out. We had 25,000 of these printed, and they're distributed through Oregon Welcome Centers, rest areas, hotels, points of attraction, as well as the ferries up in Washington, PDX, and Eugene airports. And we send them direct mail. And they're available on our website digitally, and they're available on the Albany Explorer app, which is a free app that you can download from your Google or iPhone. So please be sure to grab one, share them with your friends. The mayor will sign the welcome letter if you like, and pass them around. So we're happy to have that. Also, I wanted to remind you that we have the Albany Summer Passport for Kids. We had 180 kids sign up yesterday, but I heard some out there. I meant to check and see what the number was tonight, but we have over 180 kids signed up already. And this year, thanks to a grant through the Oregon Heritage All-Star Community Fund, we were able to get it printed in Spanish. So we have some Spanish copies, too, for people who speak Spanish. I brought copies of each just for a demonstration. You actually have to bring children into the AVA and have them take their picture to sign them up for that. And we also have the parent information in Spanish and English. And that grant comes from Albany being a Heritage All-Star community. We were the first in the state. And it's distributed through the State Historic Preservation Office and runs through our preservation planning department here in Albany. One more thing, since I have a few seconds left, I have volunteered at the Senior Games. It's really fun. It was out at the pickleball tournament out at LBCC, and I tell you, those people are in matching bling outfits and having the time of their life. And we also are sponsors of that event, so that we can distribute our visitor guides and talk about Albany to those contestants as well. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is our other director, Lisa Grado.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa Grado, Albany Downtown Association, and I'm just going to do a quick downtown update. If you haven't heard, we are beyond ecstatic that the Albany Downtown Association was awarded an Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant. This is for the Albany Civic Theater revitalization. The grant was in the amount of $400,000, and that is up from what the previous maximum opportunity was. In the past, it was 200,000, so we're delighted that we were able to bring that home to Albany. This is to rehabilitate the facades and a complete, some specific repairs in the Rialto Theater, and also the Mayalfin's Confectionery Building, which was first round, or numerous other things, the building that's been vacant that they share the wall with. This project includes a match of $279,626, and that'll be primarily in volunteer hours, in-kind donations, and cash. The work will begin this month, I think they're already on it, and that'll be completed in early 2028. So it's about two and a half years. Overall, the Oregon Heritage is a division of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. They awarded 35 grants this time, no more than one to any particular city. That was 10.6 million, and that's funded by lottery bonds. So if you want to know where that money's coming from. The Craft Brew SmackDown, one of our fundraisers, we partner with the Greater Albany Rotary Club. That's set for Friday, August 8th. That is the Friday after the jamboree, not the same weekend this time. Another exciting thing, we are launching a project called Operation Christmas Tree. I have a logo to share with you, but we will be back with more information at another time. We received some feedback, as did the city, on last year's Christmas tree, and our board decided that they would reach out to the community and put together an opportunity. So we've been partnering with city partners, community partners, the Chamber, and others to work on this, and you'll be seeing an opportunity to sponsor an ornament that would be hanging downtown during the holidays, either from a family or from a company. Those go on sale during Crazy Days, which starts tomorrow. Also, just wanted to let you know, if anybody is wondering if there is any place to eat on a Monday, there are 18 restaurants to eat on Mondays. So some of those may be cafes or smaller opportunities, but there is plenty of food on Monday and even on Sunday. So reminder again, Crazy Days is this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and there is a lot more in here. So thank you to the city, who's going to come help me with some parking lot cleanup and some other great things. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Director. Next is Ron Close. Thank you.
My name is Ron Close. I live in North Albany on Violet Avenue, and I'm here to talk and support what Tom was talking about earlier, on how the Eaton's are being treated. Been able to witness their interactions with the city employees, and I found them to be very antagonistic, really, really not willing to work with Mr. Eaton and his wife on development of their property. And in contrast to Benton County employees, the first thing, they're very warm, open, wanting to say, hey, we want to work with you. And so in that case, some of the problems that they're fighting with, with here in the court was that on an easement. And who owns the easement? Benton County or, or the city of Albany? And that throughout the lengthy period of time, the city hasn't really come clear that they own it. Now it's more prescribed or whatever. But irregardless of that, if the Benton County is happy with the action plan that Mr. Whitten is doing on this part of the property to, with drainage, et cetera, and he put a covert in, and then wants now fill it up, now the city wants to put it back to the original ditch, which I don't understand what the city's going to benefit from that. And all sort of understanding is that like the time in the court, the lawyer fees, I'm sure Mr. Kidd can answer that, but it just seems to be, let's work against you versus wanting to making it work, and then what are you really going to win? The man's not going to have his property like he wants it. The drainage to the, to the lake is gonna, is improved, and it was already, it's better than the open ditch before. And it's just, you know, to me, is the biggest thing is that if Benton County gone through all his permits, and they're happy with what he's going to lay out, why is the city fighting that? And I just, it troubles me, and it, but it really troubles me is how, how these people are treated. Mr. Whitten, he's, he's, he's a very professional, very low-key person, but very, you know, he's a lawyer. And he's, and I think it's fact that he's a lawyer, that this is even continuing, because he's not going to be bullied, because he can, he's paying for himself. But I just think, the mayor But I just think, the mayor, I think there should be a resolve, and I think we should look at what the Benton County is agreeing to and why can't the city agree to it, irregardless who owns the easement.
Thank you.
Okay, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Halbert? Did I say your name correctly? Did I say your name correctly? Dennis Halbert?
Let me see. I left one here and ate at home. I laid down for a rest, so I got up, I got the left one. I may not hear you, but I hope that you can hear me.
Okay.
Excuse me, you asked me a question?
Did I say your name correctly?
Yes. Halbert, Dennis Halbert. I live in North Albany, adjacent to the property that Tom Cordier was talking about. And Ron, we're all neighbors. So I have probably three things I'd like to say. I have lived in that residence for 20 years. Mr. and Ms. Seaton bought the property next door, and with the idea of building a house, there's one city lot there, and they have three acres. So city lot is part of it, and then the rest is county. So it's county and city both. But I've watched the progression of this. I've been a contractor, I'm retired, and I have never seen such confusion in my life as there is concerning this property. And as Ron mentioned, Mr. Eaton's a professional man, an attorney, but it seems there's been a lot of harassment. I've seen city officials come out, I've walked with them, and Benton County, City of Albany claims control over a drainage pipe going through Benton County. And it just looks like they've harassed this couple. And they're very nice people, and so as neighbors, we've watched this for the last two years. And so I just want to state that I'm disappointed with our city. I'm disappointed with our city officials. Handled unprofessional manner, didn't need to be this way. I've never faced this in my years as a contractor. So in addition to that, at one point, there've been pictures taken, et cetera, two city employees came out, and they said to me, my property sits adjacent to the Eaton's. They said, could we go back in your property and take a look at some things on my property? So I said, fine, I have a gate, I let them back there. I went back there with them. They did not want to see my property. They wanted to look over the fence at his property. That is deceitful. They didn't want to care about my property. And so I just watched them, and I was taken back by that. I thought, this is city officials trying to get access to his property. I don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate that as a paying person in the city. So, and then some other things too were upsetting, and I just think the city needs to take a second look at what they're doing. Then in addition, I said, right adjacent to his property, there was an 11-foot vertical drop that Mr. Eaton has dug the dirt out with a permit. He's taken 3,500 yards of dirt out. He had to build a long home because of the configuration of the lot. Put the dirt down on the county property, but the city gave him a permit to build at the same time they have a stop work order in operation. So he says, I'm stuck over a barrel. I can build a house, but at any time, the city can put a stop work order. Would you build a house under those conditions? No. And so this is what Tom was talking earlier, and I went to court yesterday with wind going several times, and the Benton County judge said, this is unworkable. This is, you can't do that. You can't put a stop work order on this man's property at the same time, give him a permit to build. What are you doing to the city?
Thank you, sir.
The attorney. So he removed it.
Your time has expired.
My time's up?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, 3,500 yards of dirt too. I hope they can get that flattened out so it doesn't wash into Horseshoe Lake. Thank you very much.
Next on tonight's agenda is ordinance proposed AMC 7.06 Cryptocurrency Kiosks. Officer Shindell, compliance officer Shindell, are you online? Or is he here? Oh, he's right there. Pages 87 through 90 in your packet.
Good evening. So I'm here to present and then hope for, ask the council to adopt an ordinance for cryptocurrency kiosks. I'll go over briefly some of the stuff that is in your memo and kind of how we reached this point. So when thinking about this, we're thinking specifically about the kiosks such as ATMs, not cryptocurrency in general. There's two different types of scams, so I'm focusing just on ATM machines, trying to make that. So when I wrote the memo, at that point in time, we had $178,582 in Albany that had been scammed off of these kiosks. These kiosks are in random stores. We have about 15 to 20 within Albany, typically gas stations, some grocery stores have them. These kiosks allow you to exchange cash for Bitcoin, Ethereum, other cryptocurrencies. Same thing as you could do online at your computer. The rate on your computer generally ranges from half percent to 2%. At these kiosks, it's about 25 to 33%. So they take a lot more off the top in those things. So what they typically find at these kiosks is scams, money laundering, those kinds of things. When you look down the rabbit hole of these crypto kiosks, there is not a lot of oversight or authority. We have FinCEN at the federal level that looks at laundering and the scam side of it. And if you look at the state side of it, we have the Oregon Division of Financial Regulations who issues permits for ATMs. Their power breaks down even more, and it's a base, a case-by-case basis, because if the machine owns the Bitcoin that they're transferring to somebody or an account, there's no permit required within the state. If they do not, and it's a transfer from one party to the next, then they're required a permit through the state. So in working down that path, talking to them about their regulations and kind of what we were seeing here in Albany, we ended up at the point where they're like, we're not going to really bring in more legislation on this matter, even though we know it's an issue until the next long session. At which point, then we find ourselves where at, and I'm here talking to you guys. Since I've wrote this memo, we've had more stolen. So at that point in time, just Bitcoin in general was just under a million dollars of actual taken money. There's been more attempted. It's been about a million and a half that's attempted, but just under a million was actually taken at that time. As of today, we've passed the million threshold in scams, and we've also had an additional, about $11,000 in, of that is from a crypto kiosks. So it's a continuing issue. This is a convoluted thing because the authority on Bitcoin is just still to be debated in the courts. So what do we as the power of the city have, is kind of what we landed at. We have the ability to decide zoning, placement, where they could be, that kind of thing. When you look at the age of people who are generally targeted, it's typically the most vulnerable. Our average age in Albany is 58, I believe. Sorry. Got to look at my notes again. Yeah, 58. But it ranges, and those span through like fear. The most recent one we had, which luckily no money was taken, was somebody got a computer. They went on a mischievous website. It said that they were downloading child porn, and if they didn't do certain things, transfer Bitcoin through a kiosk, they were going to be arrested. Typical scams that we see. Luckily, they went to, it was at a truck stop in Albany, and one of the managers noticed what was happening and begged for them to get off the phone and that it was a scam, which took a while, but ultimately happened, so no money was taken. So this is very, still a huge issue for us. So what this code does is it doesn't allow within a quarter mile of a school, quarter mile of an elderly residential home, housing units, and within a quarter mile of our public transit system, because we also know there's lots of elderly people that don't drive, and that's how they would get to these machines. So it's restricting the area or easy access to those machines. We're not the first in this country to look at changing that. Many state-level governments are changing their requirements as far as like caps on what could be transferred, percentages that can be transferred, and those things, all things that we as a city do not have the authority to do. Other cities, particularly in, like Minnesota's one of them, and I believe it was Clearwater, they just outright banned it, and that's going through a huge court process right now. They, their mayor during their thing said they predict it will be, and I'm assuming it will be too, because it's testing their authority. So what we're doing is within our authority, things we've done for many other things. Marijuana shops, for example. We get to decide where marijuana shops are based on range. Go ahead. Your point, Dean?
I had a question for the city attorney. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm of the mindset, that's just me. Why don't we just ban the darn things?
We've talked about that, but we feel like at this point, where we're at with, at the, at the federal level and how this is being challenged in the courts and stuff, that we're going to, we would be better regulating, kind of like a time, place, manner regulation on this one, this one being a place. And I think Chris will tell you that where we were, where they're going to be zoned and allowed is pretty limited, I think, in the city at this point. And we're within our rights to do that, and I think we could survive a challenge on that pretty easily, as opposed to an outright ban on them. We would probably in litigation on that pretty quick, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. So when I set up the code, it was, it took a lot longer than I wanted to because we leave people vulnerable, but it wanted to be something that could hopefully survive. That one in Clearwater, at that point in time, when they did just outright ban, again, I keep saying Clearwater, I'm pretty sure that's the name of the city. It's been a while since I've looked at it. They were at $124,000 of scam through the cryptocurrencies, or crypto ATMs, sorry. So this one does minimize it vastly compared to what it is, and I think gives us the best opportunity to protect our citizens within our ability to exercise our authority as a city.
Counsel Van Drummond?
Yeah. So in terms of the time, place, and manner restrictions on this, I think that that's a sensible place to start. I don't necessarily disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, that, that, I don't see these as a net positive, but I think that this, this is a good place to start to me. In terms of what you've built in with that quarter-mile buffer around particular locations and a no-go within residential zones, do you, do you have an analysis of like how many existing crypto kiosks exist within this particular area that they would no longer be allowed in?
The one, the area that allows for them, if this is passed, currently has zero inside of it.
Okay. So this would limit expansion of crypto kiosks, but wouldn't challenge the location of any currently existing within the City of Albany?
No, sorry, that's opposite. So all the ones that currently exist would have to go away.
Oh, okay.
The area that they would be allowed currently has zero.
Oh, oh, the area that would be allowed, sorry, I misinterpreted what you said.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so, so literally all of the crypto kiosks within the City of Albany exist within a court, within either a residential zone or a quarter mile of elder care, school?
Yes.
Public transit. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In my research, there was one state that found that there was a kiosks that were, one company was looking to put it in an elderly care home.
Oh, my gosh.
So it's kind of one of those things that...
Yeah, it feels intentional.
It's interesting, yeah.
Well, that scares me. We cannot let that happen.
Thank you. This is great. I know we've chatted about this offline a little bit, and thank you for bringing forward some innovative solutions and seeing where folks are being impacted in our community and how we can protect them.
And sadly, this won't stop all of it. Obviously, we're at, you know, 200,000 out of about a million, but it takes a chunk out of it, and hopefully we could continue on, and other government entities could start doing some more too.
Counsel McLeod, anything? Counsel Smith, anything?
All I have is I'd like to make the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
It's, but it has to be first reading.
We have the first reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance creating Albany municipal code, chapter 7.06 Cryptocurrency Kiosks.
Is there a motion to read the ordinance a second time and title only?
I move to read the ordinance a second time and title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Will the city attorney read the ordinance, just the second time and title only?
An ordinance creating Albany municipal code, chapter 7.06 Cryptocurrency Kiosks.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Will to adopt the ordinance? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is adopt by motion. It's adopt by motion, item seven Bravo, award of contract for bus maintenance services, Candy Bliss, pages 91 to 93 in your packet. I think this is the first time Ms. Bliss has been in front of us. Nice to meet you.
Yes, this is Candy's first time here, so I thought I would introduce. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristen Preston, Operations Manager for Public Works. And so Candy's our new transit manager. She was promoted from Transit Supervisor, and she took over for Barry Hoffman's role. You may remember him. So she oversees the Albany Transit System, the daily operations of Albany Transit, the Lynn Benton Loop commuter service to Corvallis, and Albany Coleride, daily service for seniors and the disabled. So today, we have for you an award of contract for bus maintenance services. And so Candy's going to go over the background and go over the contract for your consideration.
Okay. So yeah, so we had an opportunity to go out for a bid for a bus maintenance contract. We ended up having two different companies that applied for it. Just speak a little bit closer. Oh, sorry. Okay, is that better? Okay, so we had two different companies respond to the contract. Premier Truck Group was one of them, and MV Transportation. And after looking at all the documentation that was submitted, we came to the conclusion that MV Transportation was the successful proposer. So City Transit, Albany Transit, currently has 10 diesel buses ranging from 30 feet to 35 to 40 feet, and we currently, we recently just received our first hybrid 35-foot bus, so we're really excited about that. And this would also include one of Park and Rec's trip buses in the maintenance contract. In 2024, we spent over $560,000 on bus maintenance and repair, and that was for ATS and Loop. With the new contract, the first year would cost us approximately $547,125. That's with the initial startup. So that would include all the tools and everything that they would need to get going. The second year would be a little less, $516,163. So yeah, let's see, what else do I got for you here?
And I would add, Counselor Smith had a question about this that I touch on. MV is headquartered out of Dallas, Texas, but they do have local clients, the Sandy Area Metro Transit System and the Mount Hood, Mount Hood Express System, and they have 30 clients in the Washington, Oregon, and Northern California area. So there's local representation.
Thank you.
And so I would also add that there are adequate funds in the ATS, Loop, and Parks and Rec budget to support the anticipated maintenance services. And so we're here to ask for, we're recommending to counsel adoption of the resolution to award the contract to MV Transportation and to authorize the Public Works Director to award and execute the contract with MV for five years and additional two one-year terms. Are there any questions?
Also, any questions for counsel over here?
Thanks for saving us money.
No.
I appreciate it. It's a lot of money.
And it's very nice to meet you.
Oh, thank you.
So counsel, what would you like to do with this?
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the situation correctly. So previously, bus maintenance has been handled not through a contracted vendor.
Correct.
What, what does that look, so I assume that this is like, we're looking to like lock in costs with a, like a fixed-cost contract here instead of, our maintenance costs could go up wildly depending on whoever we're working with at the time?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. I think that's a great, great solution.
Counsel Thompson, you have anything?
No.
Counsel Newton?
Not even...
Counsel, you already, you've got your question answered. So counsel, we have a resolution before us.
I move to adopt a resolution awarding a contract...
I move to adopt a resolution awarding a contract to MV Transportation, Inc., for bus maintenance services, and authorizing the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with MV Transportation, Inc., for bus maintenance services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, your motion, your resolution's been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is business from the council. I will start with Ward, let's not throw Ward three last time, didn't I?
Ward two.
Ward two, so Ward three, Counselor Smith.
Oh, it appears I am Ward three this evening. I have two items. One was a, my notes from my phone call, a call from a resident of Ward one, right before the Fourth of July, who asked about the possibility of allowing citizens to fill potholes for a few hours a couple of times a year in order to get a $5 discount from this, on the city's services fee. Would like us to consider that as a way of keeping prices down for residents and for increasing public engagement in city operations. I promised him that I would bring that to you. This resident lives right off of Washington Street, and he also wanted to thank Public Works for the work that was recently completed on the street. I'll throw in my two cents, I like that, too. It's good. He's concerned about costs for senior citizens, and thought that if, if we can figure out a way to fix potholes where it doesn't cost anything other than volunteer labor, he would like us to consider that. So, the other thing that I had to bring up was, I just found out today that about, this is good news on top of good news, it's been almost two years ago that we changed the speed limit on Waverly Drive from the city, the South City Limits to Pacific Boulevard, I believe. Made it, it had been 40, and now it's 35. That was at the request of a number of residents at the Mennonite Village, and worked very hard to get that done. ODOT agreed that it needed to be changed because of all the development that had happened in the neighborhood in the last 20-some years. So the, the folks at the Mennonite Village have been concerned, being at the, the very start of that speed zone, there still is a perception that people are driving hell-bent for leather as they come off of the south end of Columbus Street, because you cross the bridge and it becomes 50, and people are going faster than that anyway. Captain Drum did a speed survey with, at, on that area, and found that most people are driving 35. The Mennonite Village folks wanted additional enforcement, they've had the speed trailer out there a number of times, and the flashing numbers get people's attention, and that may be part of the reason that people had been driving 35. But that is not their avail, it's not there all the time. Captain Drum said that the city did not have the funds to do that, which is true, and the folks at the Mennonite Village said, we'll try to find a grant, and they did. They applied for a grant through AARP and were awarded $9,000, which I think is just incredibly wonderful, and they're working now with Captain Drum to go through the permitting process and, and locate where to put the, the poles with, with the flashing speed signs. It'll be on the, probably on the planter strip between the sidewalk and the curb, so it's, it's city property, and anyway, there's some details to work out, but I just wanted to applaud my constituents at the, at the Mennonite Village for just sticking with this and getting things done. Government can't do everything for everybody, and, but you can do things for yourself, and to find a $9,000 grant is pretty impressive.
That's amazing.
That's a, that's a good news story in, in my world.
That's amazing.
Fantastic.
You could take that back to Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, yes, that's right. Counselor McLeod?
Thank you, sir. I have two items. Today, I attended Fun in the Park at Lehigh Park with the new all-abilities playground. My daughter enjoyed the play structure, the games, and the booths that were, that were available, and I wanted to let my neighbors know that I will see them July 23rd at Doug Kellen Park in Ward Two for Fun in the Park in our own neighborhood. So I will see you that day, I will be at the city booth, saying hello to all my neighbors. Also, today I received an email asking about immigration enforcement policies within the city of Albany, and I did respond to that email, but wanted to, to also address it here. I, I copied the, the city manager and the police chief on my response, but I quoted the city manager's report dated January 31st of this year regarding immigration enforcement questions. It said that "Many have expressed concerns regarding recent changes in immigration enforcement policy at the federal level." Again, this is what the city manager said on January 31st on this issue. He said, "We also recognize that the impacts of those changes on our community have caused fear, and we are empathetic to their concerns. Nothing in our approach has changed, and we continue to follow the law." I wanted to, to then also quote the applicable statutes that he, that he mentioned, ORS 181A 820, as well as ORS 181A 823, ORS 181A 826. And he, he then says, "In short, we're able to assist immigration authorities only if there is an overlap of a serious felony investigation, like human trafficking, or if the suspect has committed a serious felony and is wanted for those crimes." So I just wanted to address those concerns on immigration enforcement, and to let you know that I also share concerns about safety in our community, I believe in due process, and I will uphold our constitutional rights, and ask that person to reach back out if they have any more concerns. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Van Jemel.
I just have one item of constituent concern to bring forward tonight, also related to streets and speed, it seems to be a, a common theme, and this one's been verbal, because it happens to be near where my daughter goes to dance classes, at Legacy Ballet at First and Main. I've had multiple parents there, when they found out that I'm on the city council now, bring up to me that they feel that that intersection is kind of dangerous, particularly around the like early rush hour time bound four, which also happens to coincide with when some of the younger kid dance classes are, there's not a lot of parking in that area around the dance studio. And so folks end up parking on the streets around the area, and there's that left turn on, there's, it's a stop sign, but you can turn left onto First without stopping, and people come whipping around that corner. There's only crosswalks on three sides of the intersection, and it just feels to folks fairly uncontrolled when they're trying to cross the street with little kids. It's not all hours of the day, so it may not get noticed all of the time, but wanted to make sure to bring that forward as a possible spot to look at where we might be able to implement additional pedestrian safety improvements.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I just, as a housekeeping measure, and I guess this would be directed at Peter if he were here, but in his absence, Chris Bailey, I just, I haven't really weighed in on the blinking light notification device on North Albany Road, and I just, I want to add my support for it, especially if we used revenue coming in to help pay for it. I just, I just wanted to add, add my, my part to that. And since we won't meet again until August 11th, I believe, I will be participating in, and I want to promote, the Albany Regional Museum is, is having something called History Through the Headstones on Wednesday, July 30th at 6:30 at the Riverside Cemetery, where folks, I'll be volunteering to discuss the life history of a Mr. Tomlinson, who was, he was a businessman in town, but he was also a former school board member and a city counselor in like the early 1900s, and I think, I think education in general, I think outstanding teachers and, and education leaders are kind of the focus of this year's summertime tour, and so you get a chance, there'll be docents. Some people will dress up in period costumes, I don't think I'm doing that. But it's a fun, I've done, I've, I've listened to folks, it's a good thing, and you learn about a little bit of history of this, of this great city that's full of history. So Wednesday, 6:30 refreshments provided by the Riverside Cemetery Board.
Good, thank you. Counselor Newton?
I have a few questions. I was wondering, I'm not sure if Director Bailey might have this answer, I'm curious about the status of the contract being signed for the Wells Fargo property. I know that we mentioned, I believe, back in May, that if he hadn't signed the contract in June...
Yes, so they have signed, they have signed the contract. They, I think June 1st was the deadline, and they did sign the contract by June 1st, so.
Wasn't there supposed to be like earnest money, has that been paid, do we know?
It's actually, yes, it's a monthly charge, it's a $3,500 a month fee for it, and I don't know if it's been, I'm...
Sophie's not here. Sophie's not here, so Matthew, do you have any idea? Have we received the $3,500 per month? Okay, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll definitely get back to you on that.
Okay, and do we have a status of when ground might be broken, and when this project might be completed? I just want to have that hole in downtown filled.
Yeah, so on the option agreement, he has a certain amount of time, I believe, 18 months, to decide whether he's going to move forward with that project or not, and that's what, so he's paying that $3,500 a month for consideration of having the ability to, to buy the property still. So I don't anticipate groundbreaking anytime soon, because he hasn't formally bought the property yet.
Okay, thank you for that update. If we're able to get an update, maybe in, maybe Peter's next Friday report, just letting us know where things stand and how things are going, I'd like to know what's happening with that property. And then also, I was curious, I guess Sophie's not here, I remember at the last CARA meeting, we were waiting to hear like where, like taxes were at for one of the years, to determine how much money was left in CARA, and where we were going to allocate that, I was just wanting to know a status on that, it's been a few months.
Okay, yeah, I'll get with Sophie on that one.
Like the end of August or something like that.
Okay. And then, last thing I have is, yes, I do, I, again, I, as I stated on Monday, do want to have the flashing blinking lights, I think that we can use the money that has come in, because this is not a, a money grab, a cash grab, this is just for safety for kids, and I really want to make sure that people are aware whenever the schools are open, you know, hearing that, his last name, I apologize, Harrison?
No, Howard, I know.
No, it was the gentleman before.
Close.
Sutherland, Sutherland, there we go. Received a ticket for going one mile over the 11 miles, you know, he was the 12 miles over the 20, 25, just heartbreaking, I know how expensive that is, and I know how that's an impact to his insurance, and I'd also like to, and something I, I need to, I'm planning on meeting with the judge just to see if there isn't a possibility to actually do, as I, as I discussed, I believe, last year, a process where there is, I'm basing on the word for it, where if you get a ticket, you're able to do, I don't, it's not recidivism.
Like a driving school?
Yeah, the driving school, so it comes, the, the fees lowered.
Diversion.
Diversion, that, there we go, thank you, my brain was fogging for a moment, because I know we currently have that in place for if you're aged 25 years, it's 25, right? 25 or younger?
Yeah, I believe it's 25.
And it's your first ticket, but my, my neighbor, also, you know, in his 80s, got his first ticket, and he's like, oh my gosh, this is horrible, and I'm, and it's quite expensive. And so I'd like, I'd really want us to look at that again, and see if that's not something we can do, because especially, you know, hearing that people are getting these tickets and getting multiple, it's quite a learning moment. Again, this is, this is for safety, this is for kids, you know, that are, can be sporadic and, you know, jet, jet out in the street, for people to be safer, I really think that's something we should look into, not overburdening our citizens and making sure that we're, you know, making this a, a good community for everyone. So that, that's all I have.
Thank you. I just have a few, is everybody good? Oh, is everybody right? Okay. It's, the, with some good news, we talked about the Y Veterans Housing Development, we're building on Price Road, I'm on the board, we got our $3.4 million from the legislature, so a total of $15 million to start, we're on break ground on the 10th of September at 10 o'clock in the morning, I'm excited about that, because it's for disabled and low-income veterans, 38 units with some community rooms, and we'll be doing some fundraising, but the look on veterans' faces when they found out that it's going to be started was, was heartwarming. There's a car show this weekend for veterans, Honor Flight to Send Veterans Back to Washington, DC, at no charge, it's at the Bryant Park, starts at 9 o'clock to 3. I was out there last year, saw the most beautiful cars I've ever seen in that park, so I'm bringing my grandson this year, we're gonna have a blast. I do want to address Tom Cordier's concern, I will be looking, we will be looking into this, this is the first we've heard of this kind of thing, so I know there was an issue, I didn't know it was like this.
So, and, yep.
Okay, so I know that, that there was an issue, but I didn't know it was, this was happening, so we're gonna look into that.
I was gonna say, Mayor, so that, this case that they're referring to, the city's a defendant in that case.
Oh, so we can't even discuss it, yeah.
And so, yeah, it's a, it's in litigation already, we're defendant right now in that case, so.
So we can't, it's open?
Right, so that's why we, we, I know some counselors might have wanted to respond to some of the concerns and stuff, but unfortunately, because it's litigation, we can't, so.
Thank you. But thanks for bringing that to our attention. And I had a meeting today with OCCMA Board of Directors, myself and Mayor Cross met with them on the If I Were Mayor contest, and they, they're going to sponsor the contest this next upcoming year, they gave us some money for that, a $600 donation for the Mayor's Association, but Mayor Cross and I had talked about proposing a, not only If I Were Mayor, but a city leadership contest, where we would have not just the mayor participating, but counselors and the city managers participating as well. So that discussion just started today, and so as I, we have the Mayor's Conference coming up, I'll be doing a workshop on the contest, and also pitching to the other mayors, doing a city leadership contest as well. And then the concert's tomorrow night with Tiffany, I hope to see you out there, I'll be there for the concert, welcoming folks to the city, and with that, I will turn it over to our acting city manager.
I don't really have anything tonight, Mayor.
Welcome back to the United States.
Thank you.
And, and now I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, I'm gonna make sure I got the dates for the next meeting. Next meeting will, will be Monday, August 11th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. for a work session, and Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, 6:00 p.m. for a actual city council meeting, and I will hope to see you all there during the meeting.